Five thirty-one.
And then how your wife traveled with?
Five thirty-four.
I jumped the dog.
Jason, I'm great.
Okay. It's five thirty-four and I will call the Calaveras Council of Government Meeting for February 2nd to order. Can we please rise if you can for the pledge of allegiance?
Tim, can you please lead it?
Absolutely. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial and controversial and will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested parties may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. Is there any council member who should remove consent agenda item? Is there any staff member? Is there any member from the public? Is there anybody on Zoom, Erin, from the public?
Not from the public unless, I mean, there's two on there.
No, no hands are raised? Okay. So we will bring it back to the council. I'm open for a motion for consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a second. I have a motion by Tim and a second by Alvin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, excuse me, six zero one. Okay. Six zero one. We'll move on to the regular agenda, number six, public comment, five minutes per person. Comments should be limited to items that are within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the council and not on the posted agenda. This is government code section five four nine five four point three A. Is there any public comment? We'll give it just a minute, just in case a delay. All right. We'll bring it back to the council and move on to the regular agenda. We'll move on to item number eight. This is Caltrans report.
Nothing on seven?
Seven.
What?
He was trying to slide that one through.
I did. Erin called me earlier today. We had a conversation about removing this item. She was gonna send an email out. She was gonna say for further, you know, a further date down the line. I asked her what date. You said December twenty twenty-four. Okay, you didn't get the memo. Okay, fine. We move on to item number seven. It's the minute order of approving appointments for the chair and vice chair for calendar year twenty twenty-two. I'm open for any nominations?
I would move to nominate this Amanda Baldor for chair since she's been vice chair for the past two, three years.
So we have a motion and a second for Amanda to be chair. Is there any other nominee?
Are, is it just electives only that are voting for this?
No.
Citizens, as well?
So we have a motion and a second for Amanda to be chair for twenty twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And so I will pass on to Amanda the gavel that I don't have, that she has in front of her anyway, that says her name on it. And I will, I will nominate Alvin for vice chair. Oh, we have a comment.
They're looking at the long-term side of having COVID. And one of them.
I'm guessing it's not online, but can you have some comments? I have it. Nobody needs to put a comment currently.
Yeah, I should've asked for comments before we even closed.
We got a motion in the cabinet?
Yes. Then what did you say?
Aye.
All right. That's it. He's taking us to spot. We're former chairs now, or?
We are.
Did he just comment on the thing that the audio is off?
The chat?
Oh, there's an, the audio's up.
Oh, the chat.
We need to get Erin a bigger desk.
That's the one on chat, the one comment on chat there, says we talk?
Yeah. It should be back now. Okay, next, did I have another eight Caltrans reports? Little report, no supplemental material included.
See Marlon?
Marlon?
Hi. Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, and Madam Chair, I'm still here. This is Marlon Regis, with Caltrans District Ten. Thanks for the time. Thank you to the board. I'll just give a brief report and I'll also pass along to Gregoria Ponse, who's with us as well. First of all, again, I wanted to mention a few things from the statewide perspective. And I first wanted to start with the DTC recently just, they just announced and allocated more than $495 million for projects across the state. This is a pretty big investment for the future system of the state highway system. And we have this information on our rebuilding ca.ca.gov website. And the CTC also just allocated a bit of money for projects across the state, but also for a project in Calaveras County in Angels Camp. And this was more than $2 million for the project going on Main Street. This project has ADA upgrades, as well as new sidewalk and shoulders and bike lanes as part of this project. So that's something that we're very much proud that happened recently and just wanted to share that with the board. We also are tracking the active transportation program, cycle six. The workshops are starting to kick off. We have one that's been announced on February twenty-third at nine thirty a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. This is on the active transportation program website, but if you'd like further information on the program and the workshops upcoming, and this one is specifically for the central region of the state, please do reach out to us. We're happy to share that information as well. If you'd like. Other thing I wanted to mention to the board is there was a previous request from the board regarding the project in Murphy's. And we are gonna be able to include a temporary asphalt sidewalk as part of that project. So we thank the board for bringing that to our attention and we want to make sure that we share that news with you guys tonight. That's all I wanted to mention. Gregoria, I know you're on the line. Did you wanna mention anything else on your end?
I just wanted to thank COG working with us on the overall work program. We do have a recent call for comments on the Caltrans Transportation Asset Management Plan. This is the second temp developed by Caltrans. Comments are due February the eleventh, and I will be posting the links to that on the chat at this time. I did go ahead and also post the links to the active transportation upcoming, the virtual, that's for central region, as well as Clean California in the chat, if anyone would like to take a look at those links. We look forward to working with Calaveras for receiving quarter one and two of the overall work program invoicing and quarterlies. And we also look forward to receiving the RWP fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three RWP. Thank you.
You know what? I also wanna mention to the board, we do have our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee kickoff coming next week on the ninth of February. This is at twelve p.m. Information is also on our Caltrans District Ten website, but if you'd like to join us, please do let me know. We'd be happy to have you. We wanna create an opportunity for those around the district to talk about how we can improve our bike facilities across the region. So I appreciate that. I wanna pass it back to the board. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Marlon and Georgia, we have a groundbreaking ceremony coming in the first week of March for our wagon trail project. And we will make sure you guys get invites to that and hope to see you there because you were very vital in that project and getting it started. And so looking forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you to Caltrans and Marlon Gregoria. The wagon trail, I drive the copper every morning, so it's been kinda interesting to watch that, the staking, and they're doing some tree removal and brush. And there's a lot of people traveling between Angels Camp and Stockton and everywhere and talking about it. So it's a great thing seeing moving forward. And for City of Angels, I just appreciate the time and effort and money for the sidewalks, ADA, the bike, everything that's coming to Angels is very exciting and it's gonna make our town look amazing and great. So thank you too.
Any other comments?
Hey, Amber, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that mic is the one that's so low. So maybe you guys have been keeping Alvin's on at the same time.
We got the one we switched the other day?
I think so.
Is that better?
We can share it.
Okay, yeah, no worries. It's no big deal.
Is that better?
We have to do this.
Yeah? Okay. We should probably take that off. Okay. Are there any other comments? John?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. With that, then we're good. Thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is item number nine, which is discussion and direction on strategic planning. Amber?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay with the mask on? Yeah, okay. I'll try to keep it on. I am bringing this item to you because the last strategic plan for the COG was done over ten years ago in two thousand nine. That strategic planning process really focused on some key goals on building from some significant organizational changes that occurred, you know, in the early two thousands till two thousand nine. And we really accomplished many of those goals envisioned set forth in that previous strategic plan. So we've really built on some of those successes and annually, you know, through our work program and other processes, have done some goal setting since then. But since that time, you know, one key change to note is the consolidation of the administration and oversight of the Calaveras Transit Agency that the COG now oversees. And so just bringing this, you know, to the board for kind of just general consensus and support to move this forward and to kind of seek some of your input on if there's any, you know, key issues or areas of concern that you think should be a focus of a strategic planning process for the COG. If there's a desired outcome, how quickly or slow, you know, if we need to align this with other processes, I know the county is currently going through the strategic plan. Is there a desire to, you know, wait until they're completed with theirs to initiate COGS or to just do it alongside the counties? So, you know, I see really the planning process for the COG definitely won't be as significant or comprehensive with the county or city as they're addressing a lot of organizational things in theirs and, you know, it's a longer process, larger organization. Ours, I see just really probably a series of about three, two to three workshops with the board, you know, whether that's at COG meetings or if the board desires them to be kind of separate study sessions, you know, during the day, that's at your discretion. So just really kind of initiating this discussion with you to seek some initial feedback before move forward with, you know, getting a consultant to help facilitate the process and developing that, that scope of work for this project. And I'll hand it back to the Chair.
Any comment from board members?
I'm, John Go, I think you beat me.
Okay. I recall when I first became one of the board member here, we did have a workshop and I thought we coordinated it even with Tuolumne County or Amador County. And we met over at Greenhorn Creek and they even had an example of how to prioritize projects and it was, it was really well-run. And I enjoyed it and I learned a lot as a new board member at the time. I know this board, you know, we have a mix of some newer board members and some experienced board members, but even so, I find every time you attend one of these, you do learn more about how the processes are. Obviously, things are changing right now. The infrastructure plan has passed, so there's some new money out there for us to be working with, which is nice. So I think potentially maybe if the county's gonna conclude their strategic plan the next three to six months?
Hmm, no.
No?
Maybe three to six years.
It's not the general plan.
Strategic plan's close. We, we have a retreat scheduled for the twenty-fifth of March and then a lot of stuff will come out of that after that retreat. And then the departments have their little retreat. So we'll know more after that.
The question was raised, should we wait until the county's concluded? I think the opportunity is, is there for us today to go ahead and maybe work alongside, knowing that we're gonna receive the county input as they develop further plans on their end. But I don't think it's a bad idea for us to, to move forward with it rather than wait behind the county.
Okay.
I would kinda echo what John said. I mean, almost he was spot on with what I would think. Unless, unless staff feels a need to wait for the county a hundred percent, then I could go with that too, but.
Yeah, I don't, from my perspective, you know, see a reason we would need to wait for, for the counties unless, you know, there's things coming out of the county that might influence COG. And to what John was talking about, we did an annual, one year we did just, it wasn't a part of strategic setting, you know, process, but it was part of goal setting. And it was like a funding one-on-one kind of workshop and we did invite our neighbors and it was really good workshop. I think it was about, I think, four hours. We did two hours before lunch, had lunch, and two hours after lunch. So we could definitely do something like that to kind of kick off the, the process and gives a nice kind of orientation as to, you know, the funding environment, what COGS does, what COGS role is and get some goal setting and feedback on that one.
My last?
Thank you. Two questions. One, how many items, and I've never seen the long-range strategic plan, but how many items that are on there have already been either addressed or are not, they're antiquated, they're no longer needed? And typically in scenarios, when I've served in that type of capacity in the past, we would sit down and revisit the plan once a year just to see what our progress was and if something had changed. And you would have short, medium, and long-range goals, so. Do we think moving forward, we'll be doing anything that would conflict with what the city or the county might come forward with?
I mean, I can't predict that, but I, I would think, you know, we have representatives on both jurisdictions and I, I don't think that, you know, COG would be in a position of overstepping, you know, our boundaries. So I think we'd be very conscious of that, you know?
Gay?
Yeah, I don't think there's any, gonna be any conflict at all, what we do here versus what the city or even the county and our strategic plan will affect too much what it is. What I would suggest is perhaps our next meeting, put on the agenda that we do a workshop or you send out the current strategic plan and give members time to go through it and look at it and we have like a workshop scheduled for the next meeting and we can have a discussion on it. I'm in favor of going forward with the new strategic plan. I was a part of this last one way back in two thousand nine. So it's, it's been a while. I think, you know, it, some of it's antiquated, obviously because of things that changed and things are even changing faster with the mandates for electric vehicles and other things. So some of that should be part of our strategic plan in moving forward, but we can have that discussion in a workshop and move it forward. But if Erin can send out the current strategic plan from two thousand and nine, if it's even been digitalized at this point, so we can look at it between now and the next and if everybody's in favor, we can do a workshop and go through it and have, you know, give you staff direction on what we'd like to see.
Absolutely. We did go through the process of digitizing it and I did include it here in a link, but it's just underlined, so it probably kind of got hidden in the staff report. But absolutely, Erin can send a separate email with the attachment. Yeah, well, it's, yeah, I should've made it more prominent or as an attachment. It's not very long. But we can do that. Our next meeting is pretty full agenda, so I don't know if you wanna do, like, set an hour or so before the meeting or just?
Yeah, do it before.
Or do it, yeah, either way, whatever the board, whatever the board agrees on is fine, but I think that's probably the way, I think, to get a consensus that that's what we need to do and the way we need to go, so.
Okay. And what would you like this first workshop just to focus on? A review of the past strategic plan, the accomplishments we've, like, how we've accomplished that?
I think you should also do, with the, John mentioned the infrastructure. I think what's coming down the pipe, so we can talk about it now and make sure we incorporate it with what type of funding is available, i.e. bridge, master plan, funding for master plans or planning, any type of planning. I don't know where the city stands, but the county I know is gonna have some possible planning needs for funding. And then co-location, I know the years we have talked about co-locations. So how are we gonna intertwine this with CTA too? Do we wanna keep being separate and two separate building? I mean, what do we look at as an agency physically? And then Gay mentioned a mandate, so maybe you can weave that all together and just have some points to get us going, get the conversation going. And then from there, I feel like all of us will start being able to contribute to more details.
Okay. Pending timing and how much is on the meeting, I might, if it's okay, bring this in April.
I'm happy to defer, but I have a number for the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. And I think with the county's strategic plan, Amber may be coming in to facilitate, to help with that facilitation as well, to talk about, because a lot of our capital improvement plans will align with the conversation here as well. So Amber will have an opportunity at some point to participate at the county level for strategic plan too, which should help you, help here too.
She's part, she's participating Monday at the county.
Am I?
Are you not?
I'm not.
Monday?
I don't know what's Monday.
You don't, oh, I thought you were the funding director interviewing.
That's funny. Okay, I've got my direction.
Anything else, anyone else that wanna contribute now? Is there anyone online? Any public comment?
There was a public comment from Krista Dodd, who's attending out of the public, saying that she agrees with John Gomes and thinks that should be a joint session with Tuolumne County makes good sense.
Okay. 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 So if everybody's happy with that, I'll move on to the next item, which is item number ten, local agency update. I think I saw Robert on, I think so.
You did, online.
Did I not?
Good afternoon.
There he is.
Yes, good afternoon. You may have seen the project progress on wagon trails. They're cutting down all the trees. They're trying, within the right-of-way, of course, they're trying to beat the time for the, the birds nesting on the trees. If they start nesting in there, that could affect us a little bit. So they've done quite a bit of work. The next thing that they're doing is, well, I guess you've also seen that the right-of-way was state, that's a necessary element. And now what they're going to be doing is clearing the area so that they could install the fences. Fence work begins next week. So those are the items that are, that you see happening right now. We continue to have negotiations in the background with one of the property owners. So that continues. That's the big news right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Is there any question from board members? No? Okay. I don't see any city, is there a city report?
But I'll give a quickie on just the Murphy's Great Road, is right now the big one. We had to transfer some different funds around at our previous board meeting. We found some water lines, old water line that had asbestos in them. So we found a lot of interesting things on that job. We ran into material shortages, contracted, yeah, it's just, it's been an amazing project. But we're moving forward. I saw about the bidet paving again and pouring some concrete, so that project's moving forward has just been kind of a long thing. As every scoop of dirt we moved, we found an old root cellar and we found all sorts of stuff. So with that project moving forward, it'll look nice when it's all cleaned up and done. So that's all for the city right now.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to council reports. So I'll start to my last with you.
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
I don't have, actually, I do. I'll, I'll write these off first. Anything?
Yeah, I got, we just appointed last night, uh, thank you, appointed last night Rebecca Callen as the new city administrator. So at some point, I, I would like to get you in contact with her and get you guys talking and working and going forward. So that's very exciting to have her on board as of last night. So she starts, I believe, on the seventh, which is just a week, less than a week away. So that was very exciting last night. So that's all from the city.
Talk as well.
Yes.
Gay?
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Done.
Thank you, but I have nothing to report either. Thank you.
Gary and I, I have something to, Gary and I spoke at the CTC. We attended that with Amber last week to seek more funding for wagon trail, for the next phase. So I think it went really well. There were many counties and regional transit and the feedback, I, I think it was good. It was a good meeting. Gay?
I think it was a good meeting too, and we requested the four point five million for engineering and design for it. So we have a shovel ready project to seek funding for it. And I had spoke to Amber and Amanda about some options that we could do since that funding is not, it's twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five funding for that RTIP funds. But I came up with some idea that we discussed about getting the funding, some funding before that through the county to get it started and get that all done and then replace it when that funds become available at a later date. So we can get forward, moving forward now on getting design and then we can start moving forward with funding and getting the right-of-ways. And so hopefully we can be complete and funded by the time we finish phase one, so we can just go right into phase two and finish off that old corridor from Alpine County to Stanislas. So.
That's awesome.
That's the discussion we had.
Thank you, guys.
And after, oh, Stafford's. I forgot, Erin, you're on deck.
I'm on that.
Took a minute to sink in.
Just executive director.
Amber?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to thank Supervisor Tofanelli and Follendorf for attending with me last Thursday and spending the time to wait until our item, so blocking out a good four hours that, that day to sit and wait. But the CTC and CTC staff really appreciate when they see elected members' support for these projects. So I think that was really important. So I appreciate your time representing the COG on that. And then just thank outgoing Chair Gary for all your leadership and support. It's been nice working with you and we really appreciate it, at least at the staff level, all your support that you've provided to the COG. So it's been a pleasure working with you. I'll continue to work with you, but thank you for serving as Chair for the years that you did.
Well, thank you, Erin. And thank you, Erin. I would enjoy working with both of you, both professional people, and both do a very good job.
Thanks. And then other than that, I just wanted to thank Caltrans for their quick response to the issue at Murphy's, the shop project. And coming back and rectifying that safety issue and putting in some sidewalks. So that was really success of partnership between the COG and Caltrans. So we're happy that that's being resolved. And then, yeah, I mean, I included some information on the new infrastructure investment and jobs act, IIJA, the federal bill. Briefly talked about it at the last meeting because it was passed on November 15th. A lot of money, a lot in competitive grant funds, a lot in formula funds, still working through with Caltrans and FHWA and FTA. All the rulemaking and figuring out how much money is actually going to end up funneling through and how much we're going to end up getting. We're hopeful, you know, we'll see some increases in our formula funds. And then we're going to see a lot more work on our behalf and our consultants and applying for grants. Because there's going to be a lot out there. There's a lot of new programs. So we're still sifting through everything, participating in workshops. And hopefully at the next workshop we bring you can bring more information on more specifics on the programs that are out there that we can apply for. Other than that, those are my updates. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. You haven't heard from CTC and the RTIP staff on our request from last week?
Not yet. They have, so last week was the North STIP hearing and then next week is the South STIP hearing. So they wait till they do the two hearings and then they start working through things. But I'll be working with CTC staff and if there's any issues and then as we discussed, if there's any opportunities to move the funding up.
Our last discussion you thought maybe, but we'll wait.
Understand. I'll call the Director of CTC. I'm anxious. I understand. Yes. Yeah, well, the CTC will take, I think in March is when they actually approve our RTIP.
Any other question for Amber? No? Okay. So we're joined and go into CTA. And first, you got the time, Ann?
Six, Zoe.
Okay. First, consent agenda item. We have multiple consent agenda items. Is there any board member that wishes to pull consent agenda item? Nope. I'm seeing none. Is there any public comment? Nope. With that, is there a motion to approve a consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a first?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Regular agenda, item number six, public comment. Comments shall be limited to items that are within the subject manager's section of the council and not posted on the agenda. Is there any public comment for anything not on the agenda? I'm guessing none? Nope. Okay. Okay. Move on to item number seven, minute order approving free rides to COVID-19 vaccinations.
Thank you, Chair. I'll take this item. So as the board knows, we've been offering free fares since March of 2020 through the end of December. And then we've instituted fares, but kind of at a reduced rate than we used to offer. And we continue to utilize COVID relief funds. So that's the CARES Act funds and CARISA funding this year in our budget. And so we, on a monthly basis, report to FTA on what we're doing in response to COVID for our employees as well as residents. And FTA is really encouraging, especially with use of those funds, to do things like free, you know, encourage rides to vaccinations and the such. And we have to demonstrate how we're doing that. So staff is recommending that we offer free, free fares or free rides to vaccination appointments. And we've worked out with operations contractor on how to try to track that in terms of, you know, when they come back from their vaccination appointment, giving them a free return trip and then a voucher for their next ride. So looking to do that, you know, we can establish an end date or we can just follow the local state emergency for COVID and have it just extend until that local state emergency expires.
Just a question. When you say local state emergency, is that a county declared or state declared?
We can tie it to whatever one you think is best. We were talking about the local county state of emergency that they adopted, the county board supervisors.
I don't know if it makes a lot of difference. I would hope that the county's following the state's lead on the state of emergency because I would expect that there's probably funding for it. Getting vaccinated is extremely important until we get past this pandemic. So I'm totally in favor of continuing the free rides, especially if we have money coming to support that on our transit system.
Correct.
I'm sorry. Are the rides going to the designated areas in the county that? Or is it just like almost a free-for-all wherever the person wants to go?
It would be specifically to a vaccine appointment. So if they're riding the bus to get to a vaccine appointment, that's what we would offer the free ride for.
How do we know that that's what the person's actually doing?
So I've, and that's a good question, you know, that's logistics we had to figure out. But I think the best way to do it is, you know, they would probably pay for the trip there. And then when they get on with their vaccination card, they just show proof that they got vaccinated that day. And they would get the free ride back with a voucher for, you know, the trip that they had to pay.
So the card is the check and balance.
Right.
Correct.
And including booster shots too. If you've already been vaccinated, you show them your card and you say you're going on to get a booster shot.
That's the idea. Yes. Yeah. And we can clarify that.
Does that do anything, like are we going against TIPA regulations by asking a person for medical documentation?
We can confirm that, but FTA is the one, you know, the federal transit administration is asking us for this data and information. And it can be voluntary. They don't have to do it and they don't have to get a, you know, then they just won't get the free ride.
And it's not, it's not a HIPAA violation.
So apparently we've already confirmed it.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Is there any public comment?
No.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that, Erin? Okay. Next is item number eight, presentation of the new directive connected to our regulation software.
Well, this is Erin.
And now one that.
In the spotlight.
So. Thank you. I knew I'd forget it. In October of last year, we awarded a contract to Spare Labs for some intelligent transportation software. And as a recent then, we've been working with them to integrate our services. And then as of January 3rd, in tandem with the new services, we've launched that software. And so we just want to take this opportunity to kind of show you what it is and kind of how it works for us. So. I've broken up into four different kind of categories. I'm going to start with rider experience. So with this software, we actually have an app now where riders are able to book their rides. It's a very, very quick, simple process to download the app. I have that information on our website. But you download the app from the app store. It's available on Android. It's available on iOS. And then you simply put in your phone number and now you're ready to go. With your location turned on, it's going to, Calaveras Connect is going to pop up. You say, yes, that's me, and you can start booking rides. Another positive to this as a rider is you can now see the location of the bus once you book the ride. So if you booked it for picking you up at 1:45, you're going to get a notification at 1:40 to say, hey, the bus is five minutes away. And so now you're better able to say, I got to get my purse packed, my backpack, I got to get out the door, whatever you have going on. And then another positive from this would be that riders are able to leave feedback. So they've ridden the bus and they can actually rate their experience and provide notes if they choose to that we can then see. So that's really exciting for me at least as the rider experience. And then next would be dispatch experience. This is transportation, I'm sorry, trans operations and how they would use it. Of course, we're hoping to make it as efficient and useful for them as possible. They can create the duties for the drivers for their daily functions. And they also would help schedule rides for riders if they choose not to use the app. They can call in to customer service and have the ride put in through dispatch. The dispatch can actually save rider profiles. So if we have somebody who uses the system time and again, it would make that a little more expedited in that they're saved in the system. And we can just say, Margot is ready to go, call up her name and then just put in her location and times that she's looking for. We can also set up reoccurring rides. So if Margot goes to the same place every Tuesday at the same time, we can have it reoccurring. So it constantly pops up, which again saves more time for dispatch and for the rider in booking the ride. And then our dispatch as well, as you can see on the screen, although it's a little obscured. This map here is something that dispatch would be able to see and it actually shows you all the buses that are in the field or in the community at that time. And there's different colors, meaning different things for the buses. So dispatch would be able to kind of know if there's something off or if there's something issue. This doesn't show all the colors and this isn't a map of our area. It's just an example. But gray means that matching is paused. So if a rider goes on the app and tries to book a ride, it won't automatically get assigned to that bus. But dispatch would be able to assign it if that bus is able to accommodate that ride. Blue means there's no rides assigned to the bus. Red would be that the bus doesn't have a connection to the service or is 10 minutes late. Or hasn't had the connection for 10 minutes and/or is 10 minutes late. There is yellow, which means no connection or late one to two minutes. And then there's a green, which means everything is great. So they have rides, they're on time. We're very happy. And then we can move to the driver experience. There's not a ton to say on the driver experience in that our drivers already use iPads when they function on fixed route to use the Zoom app to know where they're stopping next and to put in information. So this is just simply if they're assigned to dial a ride services for the day, they would use the Spare app versus the Zoom app. So they're already comfortable with the iPads. They're already comfortable with entering this information. But what I like is, as you can see on the screen, this is what a driver would see on their iPad, saying that they have 11 minutes and they go and pick up Ron. But they're also able to see who to kind of expect at the left or at the stop, being an adult, a child, a senior. And in this case, Ron uses a wheelchair, so the driver already knows that's what's to expect. If they are to stop or get flagged by another person on their route that they're able to accommodate, they can actually add that information. It doesn't have to be booked through the app or dispatch. They can still accommodate and pick up a rider en route. And then, so they can see the details. It makes it flexible. It makes them able to accommodate riders still. That's kind of what the drivers see. Just not a lot of detail to go into on that one. And then we have kind of where I'm going to spend most of my time and which is really, really important is reporting. So Spare in itself, what's really exciting is it collects pretty much every aspect of data we can ask it to on our dial-a-ride service, which is very exciting. And then it presents that information in numerous methods, which is going to help us to kind of look at our service in different ways and hopefully make it accommodate the community as best as possible. So the first one you see here is a weekly email that it auto generates and tells us kind of the weekly summary. So this was the 24th through the 30th. That was the most recent week. And it's just kind of a template of numbers that they tell us on how we operated. And then another option is if we actually go into the website on our end, we would see all these numbers, which is a lot. With a lot more things. So you can see it numerically, percentages, decimal points, all that. They provide bar graphs, which I think is really handy. What you're looking at is January numbers. So this is the whole entire month and not just a week. And then they also provide a really nifty little heat map. So this is the heat map showing January's pickup locations. And so obviously red and orange and yellow are the more popular pickup destinations. It's really handy to see where our services are being requested and used. And then the green would be slightly less popular. And so you can see, well, I don't know if I have a mouse on here. Yeah, I do. So this is actually copper. This is going to be your San Andreas, Angels Camp, Mountain Ranch, Milk Hill, Willseyville, West Point and Jackson area. So we're pretty excited about it. It displays information in really great and I think useful ways. And then also something really wonderful about Spare is that since we started working with them, we have certain metrics that we measure and that we use for reporting purposes that aren't necessarily picked up in these reports. And so they've actually sat down and listened to us and created a Google Sheets or an Excel report. So we can download all this information, stick it into this Excel, and then they pop up specific measurements that we use. They've been super helpful, very responsive. So we have like our on-time performance, boarding's by zone, boarding's by fare type. And those are separate Excel sheets that we use for our purposes. And I know I went through it kind of fast, but if you guys have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Board have any questions?
The app is called Calaveras. Can I?
The app is called Spare. So you would download the Spare app on your phone. And then if your locations turn on essentially, Calaveras Connect is probably going to be the only thing that pops up because we're the only thing in the area utilizing Spare. And you just hit that and then it's very simple and you're ready to go.
This is awesome. I love this.
Very exciting.
Hey, this is a very neat feature. Are we having any issues with people not having connectivity service in certain areas of the county?
I think we would anticipate connection issues just because of our county. We know there, there is places here that don't have connections regardless of what service you use.
Right.
We haven't had that feedback that I've heard yet about anybody having issues. So.
Yeah, but you know, we have our, the back, the failsafe is just call our customer service and they'll schedule your ride.
I just want to make sure I may have missed it, Erin. This Spare app, you can go to like the Google App Store and down, okay.
Correct.
I just want to make sure people are looking at.
If you just search Spare, it should come up. And then today, actually, I made sure to go onto our website. And there's two different locations on the Calaveras Connect website where I made it clickable, take you directly to your app store to download the app for Spare.
Thank you.
I guess I, I do have another question. Okay. Does this Spare app, does this work for other transit agencies or is it just exclusive for us?
There, if the transit agency is participating, then yes, they're going to be available there. So if you download this and then you travel to some other city and their transit happens to participate, it's going to pop up in your app as an available service to use. But it just depends on the transit agencies. So.
So following up on that, does Amador, Twalney County use Spare?
That was my question.
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm sorry, Tim.
No, no, that's good.
Okay. I guess the other question, and I, that heat map actually drove me. Um, I guess the other question, and I love, that heat map actually drove me back to looking at the consent agenda item. I didn't realize we were sending more people to Jackson than we had people transferring through the in-county use of the transit system. Has Columbia College opened back up? Are we helping students get to Columbia too? I didn't see.
Yeah, we're still, we still have, we have the new Columbia College Shuttle, which does five trips a day out to Columbia, so that's a fixed route.
Okay. Would those heat maps be available to us as board members to see?
Um, we can always produce them somehow monthly, you know, summary. Um, but it's really on the administrative side that we see them.
That might, I mean, I'll ask on behalf of the board then, uh, if you could include that with the tabular summary with the Calaveras Transit, um, performance metrics? I think that's a great picture of what's happened in the last month. Um, and it's just one, it's a request for one more page in our agenda packet, but I think it's a very, pictures give a thousand words. It's a, it's a nice picture of what's going on.
Yeah, we can do that monthly. And then we have our semi-annual, um, reports and annual reports that we will provide a lot more detail.
Okay.
For the board, but I don't think that's an issue.
No, super quick. We can. It won't cover Columbia, of course, because it's.
It's just your dial-a-ride.
It wouldn't show Columbia?
No. This is just your dial-a-ride demand response system.
Columbia falls under fixed route.
So, so are we still using the Zoom software independently to also be tracking rides?
Just for fixed route.
For the fixed route?
Yeah.
So we, do we have anything that puts everything together? Are we basically using two different software packages?
You have to, I, that's just.
We do.
There are no system that has fixed route and demand response. Um, Spare actually is working on a component to get fixed route incorporated so that when we can get rid of the second software.
Have everything.
Yeah. And so that's the ultimate goal. But right now, um, Spare is, is for dial-a-ride.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm assuming we'll be able to track how many people are actually using the app and see the progress?
Yes. That is one of the measurements. Um, it shows up. And like I said, this is just January's numbers. January was kind of our learning experience. But on here, I can, I can look at users and it'll tell me people who just did their, just downloaded the app and booked through the app, it can tell us who their first ride is. Um, a lot more information on who the actual users are, for yes.
I just wanted to say this is pretty impressive. I think it's the data you can pull from it too and hopefully makes your guys' life a little easier so you can have another five minutes apiece or whatever. But I'm just, yeah. It looked like the data you can pull from that for, you know, quarterly, yearly reports, look back in past history would be pretty amazing from year to year, I think. So, um, the data you can pull from it is gonna be amazing.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there any public?
No.
Thank you for sharing that. That was pretty cool. Now I'm gonna have to try it. I just gotta think of a place to go to now. Uh, next on the agenda is pass transit.
She's not on?
She's not on?
She's not on, okay.
Yeah, I think she's, she's been ill, so I guess she couldn't make it.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. So we'll move on to staff reports. I don't believe other than.
I've exhausted myself now.
I don't have anything in addition to.
Okay. You guys have any, you don't have anything?
No, I'm good for another four years.
I, I just wanna say and, and thank Amber and Erin and, um, the other members that were here and are still, um, for the last two years since we took transit over and the condition that it was and to where we're showing what our presentation was here today, that what we've gone through and where we're at in two years is amazing. Absolutely amazing. And I just wanna thank staff for everything they've done and the board too for all the changes we've made and the progress we've got going forward. I mean, you're absolutely correct with what's unlimited now, what we can do with the information we've got. When you look back just two years ago when we took it over and, and the money it owed and, and just not collecting and we're all current. So, um, I wanna thank everybody for the progress we've made and the work that's been done.
Thank you, Gay. If there's nothing else, then we'll join to March 2nd, about 30, right here in the boardroom, unless there are any serious changes that happen between now and then. Right?
Is this like my compromise for Madam Chair for her first meeting?
Yeah, by one minute. We kept it short.